Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:04 PM if we could stand for the pledge allegiance speech. Something that we have done in quite a while was forgot that it's a point where the firing system came, so there's ends up over back over there. Over there. And then could I get a roll call, please?
This is Gillar. Here, Mr. Pascal.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
This is Dion. Here, Mrs. Gary. Here, Mr. Yanoi.
Yeah.
Mr. Nolan.
Here.
And I would like to turn it over to the board to take a minute this one.
Thank you. At our last board meeting, we recognized the top three students from the class of 2021. And now here, that's from the host high school. A picture here, we have the top two students from the host middle school. E grade class, Che Fontaine on the left, from the title of auditorian with a 99.39 grade point average. And then Larry Lee from the title of salatorian, solicitorian with a 98.48 GPA. So congratulations. So in the middle photo, and we have some other people here who can speak to this later if they wish, it was taken at the middle school's most recent staff meeting. Some dirt bike, dirt bike racing in the parking lot. There's a video of the event on our website and social media channels. So I'm not sure who the winner was. I think everyone was a winner. And the third photo was taken this morning at Harmony Hill Field Day, an annual event where students compete in a variety of track and field events. So before we move on to this, this portion of the evening, I'd like to first recognize our Board of Education President Matt Nolan and thanking for serving on the board for over 10 years. We understand this is your last official board meeting tonight, and we will greatly miss you. I know that you have, you'll be greatly missed. You've served the students, families and staff, but for all this, you have a variety of ways. But I believe from our discussions, you will still be a participant in events that involve in your school. So thank you. We'd love to present you. With this plaque, in appreciation for your leadership, outstanding vision, dedication, and generous commitment of time and support to our students and community during your service as a Board of Education member. So thank you so much.
And I'd like to just speak on behalf of the Board of Education. So thank you, Matt. Matt Nolan spent over 10 years of service to the close city school district Board of Education. Matt throughout his tenure has been an advocate for both students and community. He's been as integral part in supporting educational programs offerings for students to stay current, especially in the world of tech. He's been a mentor to students, to families and to me as well. His knowledge of work procedures and protocols has been such an asset to all of us. Not only has Matt committed 10 years of service as a volunteer, he stepped up time and again to take on a leadership role. As a leader, Matt comes, has come in organized nature, has been listening to me personally. I think for everything I've learned from you, you will definitely be best, best of luck in the teacher endeavors. And I'm sure this is not the last we'll see of you. So thank you, Matt.
Thank you, everyone. I'll talk to more later, I guess, by the end of the meeting.
Thank you. And so tonight, we would like to recognize our retirees, many who aren't here for this, us this evening. And to start us off, Principal Cliff Bird from Abram Lansing.
We thank you very much for the opportunity to do this. We actually have nine folks that are retiring from Abram Lansing this year. Mr. Perry told me that I would probably take a half hour. I'm going to work maybe 20 minutes. Two part-time aides that have been there for years, and we'll be sorry to have them go. Sharon Santoro, a full-time aide, has worked in my building for 24 years. Sharon thinks she can run the building, and most of the time she does. So she will be a great boss. She has really been front to work with all these years. Kelly Gagnon was my secretary. She's been in the district 21 years now. She was at Abram Lansing one, which might say something, but that's okay. So we do have five CPA retirees. I want to talk about classroom teachers first. There are 120 cumulative years of wisdom and experience with these four classroom teachers. Well, experience with these four classroom teachers. 30-plus years, each of them have been at Abram Lansing. That's, that's an amazing achievement on its own. I have spent almost half of my life coming to work every day with these three and the dismal person here. And actually, at their age, they've spent more than half of their lives coming to work with me. It was a great privilege for me, and I will not ask them how they feel about coming to work. I am finally, after this year, getting rid of all of the teachers that were hired by our former administrator. I think, I was trying to go back, I think though, of the, I think three of them, I recommended tenure for, which really proves the point that I had said often to all of the super tends I've worked for. I always wonder what the principal 30 years from the time they're recommending tenure will say about their administrator. Good job, Anna. Regina's not here. I will always remember Regina's birthday. It's on the birthday of my first daughter, so we always kind of celebrate together. It's a little secret talk that we have. Regina has had a multitude of kids who needed structure, but also needed somebody that they knew had their back. And in the years that Regina's worked for me, I have given her dozens of them, and all of them have been highly successful. And we really appreciate the work that she has done with us. And honestly, I believe she's changed lives by the work that she's done with her students. So we appreciate that. Lauren Schwartz, long before we had a pre-K program, you were the first teacher to welcome our generations of kids into their first day of elementary school. You certainly loved them, and you taught them to love school. And by doing that, you made all of our jobs easier for the rest of their career. So we certainly thank you for the changes that you've made in our lives and the changes you've made in generations of kids through Abram Lansing. It was, I'm guessing about 20 years ago that Lisa and Tim, we see here in Pinterest factory, decided to try this little experiment called looping. One would go in the second grade, take that class to third grade. The other one would go in the second grade, take that class to third grade. I never know until about June what grade they're teaching, because it switches every year. But it's been a really amazing experience. I did tell them that there were lots of studies out that having a poor teacher for two to three years could affect kids for the rest of their lives, but they still decided to loop with their kids at least two years. And it really has been a good experience. But Lisa, number one, I'll always remember your birthday, September 11. So we always kind of decided whether we'd celebrate September 11 or honor September 11. She decided we'd like to do both. You had my second daughter for two years, and she's now in ninth grade. And whenever we hear the record at End of Fitzgerald, we all have to stop and sing. And she assures me, Nolan knows more about the Titanic than she does. Everyone of your kids has memories that will last for a lifetime because of the years you spend, and I appreciate that. Kim, I remember, you don't have to tell me, it was four or five years ago, I got a call from the former high school principal, Brian Lloyd. And when he got me on the phone, he said, who the heck is Mrs. Fitzpatrick? And I go, she's one of my teachers here. Why? And he said, because my entire senior class wants her to come to senior awards night. Why? That was the first class you had for three years, third, fourth and fifth grade. They never forget. You just finished your second time of having kids for three years, eight, two, three, four. And I can guarantee you from experience, they will never forget you. Jeff Smith, I always thought that the principal had the most effect on the school. I still can't stand by that. But I have learned over the last couple of years that the social worker has a great effect on the community. You've changed the hopes in the 20-plus years you've been here. The work that you've done in holiday hope, the work that you did in this past COVID shutdown, the parents that couldn't take any more of you, that changed lives in ways I cannot. The work that you've done with us will last for years, for generations of families that have been involved with. I appreciate that so much. I think. Ladies and gentlemen, the CPA retirees.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. And now for the host high school, Mr. Disgrace.
Good evening. When I was asked to speak on the CSC retirees, I was very happy and privileged to do so. I would like to read this certificate that is being presented to them, just a little bit about each one of them. The certificate reads, certificate of retirement, the whole city school district presents this certificate to each one will get one, and wishes to express their sincere gratitude for your dedication and service of the school community. This is well deserved, and these people work behind the scenes, putting countless hours and keeping our buildings clean and safe for our students. So we could, before I say something about individually, I would like a strong applause for these two. First one, Paula. Paula, on a daily basis, have a different outfit on. Depends on the occasion, sometimes dressed up as a mouse, a leopard cat, you name it. Every day, it was something different. But she's been enjoying the time here at the high school 23 years. So Paula, thank you for everything you've done for our students here at the high school. They always remember you and your outfits, and so always. So Paula. Kevin, you know, I got to know you when I was an athletic director. Most of our time was spent after school hours. You're always there if I needed you. You spent a wide share of your career at Lansing, and a lot of it at Harmony Hill, but also here at the high school. And we greatly appreciate everything you've done for us. You're always there when I need you. So Kevin. Friend Dan. Dan, again, spent most of his time here at the high school and a lot of time at Harmony Hill. Dan put in 20, a little over 20 years here in our district. And again, I got to know him as an athletic director, spending time after school hours. And again, he was always there if I needed something, or if the coaches needed something. So how about one nice round of applause for all three of you.
Thank you. And now Mr. Martin Natalie for the host middle school.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I first need to start out by apologizing to Elaine because it was rather uncomfortable the third time she asked me to let go of her ankle when she told me she was retired. Now, Elaine has topped for the close city schools 21 years.
Yes.
21 years. And she's a special education teacher. But when we say special education teacher, what we really mean is she teaches ELA, math, science, social studies, world language, which includes French and Spanish, health, and she even probably does some PE here and there. Or special education teachers do it all. In addition to that, Elaine also for the longest time ran our student council, or I'm sorry, our student activities club. And she is phenomenal at raising money. And so many kids, thousands of kids have gone on field trips because she will not let me say no to her. So she will chase me down until I say yes, and then I say yes. And thank you, the kids get to go places. So Elena, I thank you so much. I'm going to miss you terribly, and really, you're an excellent teacher, so thank you. Don't tell the other teachers I sent those things on. I have three other retirees. Judy Krumick, who is my science teacher, is retiring. I know Judy's, I was not able to make it here tonight. I hope she's listening. But Judy was a science teacher in the close city school district for 18 years. She worked the middle school, the high school, back to the middle school. Judy is the only teacher that I know that has a real skeleton in her classroom. It's actually kind of cool. If you know Judy, ask her. She goes the extra mile with all the things that she does with kids, give them experiences, which includes having a real dead person in her classroom. But she's a really nice teacher, and I wish her and her husband Paul, I know he's retired as well, and they've got some fun stuff planned. But I'm going to miss Judy, and it's really hard to replace some ex-teacher. So if anyone knows a science teacher, and she's not going to be as good as Judy, but I really need one. Another retiree that I have is Kelly Tessier. Kelly Tessier is an absolute anchor to lower stability at the middle school. She's the first person you see when you come through the door. If she's listening now, we're going to be in trouble because she does not like compliments. But I'm going to miss her terribly. And the best thing about her is she built relationships with kids. You'd think maybe she's just in the office, but she knows everybody. She knows all the kids, she knows all the families, she knows the parents. She tells me when to shut up. She tells me that I should handle things in a better way. And I actually really appreciate that, and I'm going to miss her terribly as well. And lastly, we've, we've lost Steve Lackman, who is the best librarian in the world. And in saying that, my wife is a librarian. But I'm still going to put that out there. We're all in this determent. You will not find a person that worked harder at the middle school, that had more kids under his wing at any given time, that pushed into the classrooms and shared his knowledge of the history of college with kids and families. And I can really admire him and respect him. So I really go miss Steve, and I hope he's listening. Somebody, please tell him I said this as well. Is there, there certainly will be. Thank you. Give me a few minutes tonight, I really appreciate it, and it's kind of nice to be all the people.
Thank you. And Mr. Perry for home maintenance.
Kelly loves the spotlight. I promise that's a roaster. Cliff, good job. Last time I had the major ed since at Harmony Hill, it was almost two basketball teams. So we have, we have two that are leaving us. Joanne Walters could be here with us tonight, but I just wanted to let everybody know that Joanne put 22 years of her heart and soul into the building. The kids loved her. She took a lot of time to build really special relationships. The relationships that made when a parent had two kids, the sibling always wanted to go to Joanne. So it's a special relationship that they've built. And I hope Joanne realizes that most people that you miss that aren't going to go. All right, Kelly, ready? And I, we didn't realize it, but we taught at the same, in the same district at April Park, right? But you weren't able to teach under the principle that we all learned not to be like, right? I could never work in that building because I'm, I put it out there. So anyways, so then I got to meet Kelly 11 years ago. We've had probably 400 morning discussions, at least. I enjoy our morning discussions. We solve all the district problems. We solve all the world problems. It's just, it's a wonderful discussion. I will miss that, miss that. She's, she spent 34 years, and 34 years refining the finger click. If you ever need anybody to get kids under control, she's got this finger click that it scares me when I see it. So she doesn't have to say a whole lot, just has to click that finger. Can you just show it? There you go. There you go. So it's just fantastic, fantastic. She, she doesn't like technology, right? She's, she doesn't like technology. However, last year, when we had no virtual, she did a phenomenal job. I will also tell you that she's probably the first one besides the middle school. We're going into IRA, it's a new diagnostic program. And Kelly was the first one to have her class play math and reading. I went to bring the, the results of her kids up to her the other day. She said, I know that, I've already seen that. Did you want me to show you? Right? So I was very, very proud of her for that because she's always been hesitant to learn technology, which has been great. We will miss Kelly. She is a wealth of knowledge. I cannot wait for her to come back and sub. She promises she'll come back and sub. So we will miss you. I will miss those discussions. I do have your number, so I'll probably call you when we can still solve problems.
Thank you, all of you, for your many years of service. It's been just a tremendous pleasure working with you and with the great leaders. And I love your morning discussions from any, so just give me a call. Anyone else?
I just wanted to chat in there quickly, so much that I can add really with everything that's been said, but you all have taught and reached, not even just always directly in your class, like hundreds and thousands of kids throughout your time here in the community. And then those kids become adults, and they're forever changed because of the time that they spent with you and what they learned, and how they went to be people because of you. And I just want to give you a standing ovation for everything that you've done for the community. So thank you.
And now you, you get the choice. You, you can go if you'd like. So at this point, we do have some teachers who will be receiving ten years of senior work, we've received ten. And so if we could go in the same order, Mr. Bird.
Okay. I have two folks that I recommended, and the superintendent has agreed to suggest to give tenure. Katie Dobbin, I knew from the start that Katie was going to bring a different and exciting energy to Abram Lansing, and she has not disappointed. She's shown tremendous growth over the last four years. She's also developed a very determined sense of social justice, which has been good for our community. And it has been hard for an old guy like me to move into, but she's kept my feet to the fire and kept me aware of who all of our students are and what we should be doing for all of our students. Brilliant, up to her heart. And 30 years from now, whoever's standing here, when she's getting ready to retire, will be thrilled with the decision that we need tonight. My other person for tenure is Francesca Chappal Salatro. Francesca had two very important milestones this year. One is, as an untenured teacher, she offered to teach a third grade virtual class, which, which was no easy challenge on her part, and she did an exceptional job. All of the students happened to be mine, so I popped in several times a week just to say hi to all the kids and watch what was going on. The second thing that she did this year, she had a baby. Now, of course, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight, but, you know, to those for her. Her family is, is growing, right? Her love of teaching is growing, and her love of the Red Sox is growing. So two hundred and three.
Thank you. Mr. Disgrace.
Okay, it's my privilege to acknowledge John Chikoyan here at the high school. I've only known John less than a year, but in that short time, I witnessed him do a phenomenal job within our society. And I had an opportunity to observe him, work with students, phenomenal special education teacher. In addition to that, he volunteered his time, and he coached our junior varsity volleyball in the fall. And in the spring, he was our varsity softball coach. So again, John, highly involved. Again, I've known him less than a school year. It seems like I've known him for four or five years. And again, he's an up and coming star. He's a, he's a great asset to our special, special education department in here at the high school, and I look forward to years of working with him. So congratulations, John.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Good evening. Again, I have the privilege of requesting tenure for Johnny Dundon. I've hired Johnny Dundon, but Johnny Dundon may have hired us. I, I actually can't quite tell, and I need that. You need, you need certainly something to be a middle school teacher. You need to have some schtick, and you need to build good relationships with kids and families, and you have to acknowledge your content and to be able to deliver it in interesting ways. And certainly, technology and we're both other teachers, and really Johnny does all of that. He's an excellent teacher, put my own kid in his class without hesitation. And I'm really proud of him, and glad he's on our team. In addition to that, he's on our board of directors for our PBIS committee, and he's helped do a nice reboot of PBIS to do some nice things for kids. So I appreciate him, and he's great.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you. I have one that has been granted tenure. Her name is Kat DeCheran. She's currently out. She had baby number three, her first baby, okay? But baby number three of the four that were, that were born from Harmony Hill features this year. Kat, Kat earned it the hard way because Um, Kat, Kat earned it the hard way because unfortunately she got hired as an AIS teacher in Harmony Hill, if you guys all know. If you get hired as an AIS teacher in Harmony Hill, around the third week of August, I call and say, hey, how comfortable are you? Because now you're going to become classroom teacher. So, uh, she did that. And luckily, luckily the chair of plan was behind her. They all came in and, and fixed up her room and, you know, 24 hours a day and a couple of days they got it ready to go. Kat has been a phenomenal asset to Harmony Hill. Um, I've got veteran teachers that say she's the real deal and she really, really is the real deal. Um, she did a great job last year at, in virtual and, um, little did she know, we needed a third grade teacher and we called it the third grade and she took it like a champ. She moved again. She moved downstairs again and, uh, we're looking forward to her going back to second grade next year where she's a little bit comfortable. While she goes comfortable, she will always be comfortable teaching because she's that good. So, uh, we look forward to her coming back uh, in the fall as a mom and as a second grade teacher. So that's Cheryl.
Thank you. Congratulations, Tom.
That we can, I believe, move on to forward discussion agenda items. That we're working on a presentation first.
So as always submissions for public comment can be made to be, we have I actually know this, my head. We are we comment like a boss at work. So a few updates first. Uh, we have Jeff Kino with us this evening, our athletic director to provide you an update on wrestling and Jeff, if you don't mind.
Good evening. So we recently spoke with Waterbury Athletic Director about the possibility of merging our wrestling program with, with Waterbury. And, uh, the, the deadline is August 1st to submit the virtual application. And just wanted to kind of give you some information of why we think that a merger of the wrestling program is a good idea for both of us for this upcoming school year. Our program has been struggling here in wrestling with participation numbers. The last, uh, three years, we've averaged five to seven kids. And I think we finished each year probably with about five kids on the team. We have not offered modified wrestling in several, several years, probably three. Because of participation numbers as well. If you, you know, anything about building a varsity program that starts at the bottom up. And if you can't grow the program at the modified level, it's very difficult to, to carry out that program at the varsity level, especially at a sport that, uh, you know, popularity is, is really uh, so Waterbury's had a pretty successful program, uh, as a, as a plate. Uh, one thing too, uh, you know, the diehard, diehard to the issues like myself, you never want to merge with rival and, you know, represent, you know, water relief as, as co-host student, but things are changing. Uh, Waterbury is leading the colonial council for the, for the next school year. They're going to join training conference. Uh, so they're no longer our in, in, in league rival. Um, as I said, they have a pretty good program over there. They have very good coaches. Dean Gibson is one of the coaches at Waterbury. So he's a teacher at the middle school. Uh, you know, he may be able to recruit some middle schoolers to be part of the program. We've merged both modified and varsity. Which if we can grow some numbers at the modified level, eventually you bring it back here at Coho's. Uh, that's just a bubble's program. This is just a one-year commitment. When you, when you merge, can we look at it each year? Uh, we do not have many wrestlers currently in that Coho's high school. I know it to both the top of my head, turning from, from last year to well year before, but we did not offer wrestling this year due to COVID. Uh, you know, if you know anything, it's an individual and a team sport. We, we have many forfeits because we just can't, we just don't have enough kids to, uh, represent each weight class. And it's, you know, it's kind of demoralizing. You're going into a match, you know, you, you're not going to win as a team. But you may win your individual match, but you're not going to win as a team because you just don't have enough wrestlers. Uh, so that, that makes it difficult. Uh, when you have very few wrestlers, uh, we had a 220 pound wrestler, uh, the year before this year. And he was not able to practice against anyone. So his practice was a waste of time. He had no one to wrestle against. All the, all the wrestlers were, you know, lower weight classes. So he actually would stay at practice for a little bit, do a little conditioning, and then he would go to Kirby and wrestle at Kirby, uh, for his practice. Uh, so joining with Waterbury will give us more, uh, give our kids more opportunities to wrestle against kids, uh, in their weight class, uh, which will help their individual improvement. You know, as a parent, you're guarding of, of athletes. If, if my child was on the wrestling team, I would want them to merge. I would want him to be him or her to be a part of a program, uh, where they have the opportunity to improve individually, but also be part of a team. And, uh, you know, as I said, it's a one-year commitment for this upcoming school year. And then we can, we pay each year, we can take a look at it and see what's an investment in the Coho's wrestling program.
Okay, so that I'm wrestling on here, right? So I, you know, I know that rivalry between districts are, are, you know, a big deal, but I can tell you that we've always had a really good relationship with Waterbury. The coaching staff has always welcomed Coho's wrestlers in and, you know, um, just in workouts and everything that you have said. Um, I feel 100%. I was highly involved in the wrestling program and it's been really difficult to see the participation go down the way that it has, but it's the only sport where you're one-on-one. And if you don't have somebody else to practice with, you're never going to get better. Um, I think this is an opportunity for us to, to build our program. I just have a couple of questions. So Waterbury is very grand. They, you know, everything that they do, you can tell that they are water league wrestler. Um, you know, from the clothes that they, they wear to the way that they wrestle and the way that they behave, you know, outside in, in different, in different arenas. But my questions are, have you guys had any conversations of how you would merge that so that our wrestlers felt as much a part of the team as the water for meat wrestlers did? Um, and then I guess my other question is logistics. How does that work? Is there a shared space? Are the coaches all from Waterbury? Um, would we have coaches, uh, that we employ here that are from our district? Do our kids travel there 100%? Or would there be matches held here and held there? Um, so I am familiar with the merging of McCandile and Stillwater in the past. And they have very much a shared agreement. So they would practice certain days in McCandile, certain days in Stillwater. Their brand name was, you know, both teams was kind of easy for them because their colors were very similar, but, um, so that's, those are just my questions on, on how it would play out. I am in support of this because I think that is what is best for kids right now. Um, and you said this is just for varsity level or for modified as well?
It's modified in varsity.
Okay. So again, there's additional conversations on, on like how that works for a middle school kid. If there's traveling all over or anything like that. So while mergings would potentially save us money and that we're in a shared space and not having to pay for tournaments, we would have additional travel. So those are the kind of questions.
Yeah. So there's a lot of logistics still to work out, but the first thing we want to do is talk about the possibility of having a merger and getting approval for that. And once, you know, we have the blessing to do that, we would work out all of those details with Waterbury, uh, between the two of us. And then we, you know, report those things back to you and how, how we're going to do it. Uh, this will be our first merger that I've done here at Coho's. Um, they did, they do have some, uh, experience with mergers with heat cream and wrestling before, I think football. There's a lot of mergers that are, that have been happening in, in our area and in our region over the next, what were you issue?
So, so timeline for this, um, you know, you're presenting this idea and got to us and then, and then where can you see like, what are the next steps for you? And, and what does it come back to us with details about how the system plan?
Bob, so like we just started this discussion probably in the last week or so. So we'll, we'll be continuing that conversation in the next week. To, to work out some of the details, but like I said, we wanted to present it first. That's something, a possibility and then go from there.
Right. I mean, it's a win-win. So we got some time to work out the final points.
Yeah. The, the complete merger application is to, uh, walk this first.
And accompanying the merger application, uh, his application, I would, I would, which I know so that, that would be the point of this.
Jeff, I'm sure you've given us a lot of thought. And I'm going to invest in the best interest of this to just wrestle with, I just think. And then I, I explore it, explore the recommendation. But I, to me, this, this brings a larger issue with other sports with, with educational services. And I, I think conceptually it's a good, it's a good thing to do. The other, the other view is if you aren't enough schools to, uh, offer a sport, we're going to offer. And there's probably the amount of this, plenty of sports we don't offer because we don't, we don't have the numbers to offer. So this really represents a different, a different kind of thinking. I can't pause it because in the benefit case, so if there's a cute one's wrestle, we're going to get the pass for collective wrestling. And, and that, and that's, that's what they, and when you're talking about children, the numbers don't have to be big, they have to make impact. But I think it, it brings us to a, a different level of thinking, of course, of course, with other sports, with, with academics, with programs that maybe we're not offering because we don't have enough. But if we, if you consolidate it with our work, we, we might. So I would decide this to, I support this, but I'd like us to be mindful of other opportunities this way. Yes. And in a whole, on everything, who's definitely very present, uh, last week, my other had 1000th. The director of the 1000th, now it's a shared director. Directs to Waterbury, cousin of thirty, in the 1000th. So I think mergers and, and whatever the agreement is, can allow our people to do things that they're willing. So I appreciate you showing all this, I'm also, it's easier than we're going to have such as.
Thank you.
So I also wanted to provide you an update on reopening committee that's meeting again, uh, next week. Uh, because there are some things in our reopening plan that we need to revisit. One of them, our reopening plan said that in terms of broken weeks, visitors would not be allowed in the buildings. And for, um, since the restrictions are missing and the number of COVID cases has broken, we just decreased. This is the time to start a storm. So for example, we have to request to use our fields, which then later in the year turns into a request to use these buildings. So in order to do this, we would have to change the verge of our, of our reopening plan. And we'll be working with Karen Duntrick who oversees building use and then she can start letting, you know, we've snowed, that the application process, the building use process is open. Uh, and then we would be looking at each application as in the past in terms of availability, the tiers, in terms of which keeps an organization. So I did want them to know that, um, that is a part of the meeting one day. Also discussing summer programming. Currently, our reopening plan says six feet. Some of the distance must be maintained uh, between students at all times. So this would need to discuss during some of the programming, uh, thoughts about moving to, to, to three feet. Um, and then also I know there are some differing rules right now of, of camps versus, um, classes. So that's part of the discussion too. And then we will have some other meetings over the course of the summer we'll be talking about next year, but these two are time sensitive. Any questions?
So the question was, have we still down there the baby day and not during here?
I don't think so. I don't, I don't know. I mean, in light of some of the changes and some of the restrictions. I know that the visitor, the visitors talk about things and everything. So in terms of um, that's something that we have to consider. Thank you. And then we also wanted to provide you an update on, uh, Chris of funding, the, the next slide. And Stacy and I have been trying to so so the rest of funding, the acquisition was initially due on the June 15th, but that was extended to June 30th. Our allocation is just over $2 million and is subject, still subjecting. The design plan period is the next fiscal year, so '21, '22 and '22, '23, with the funds having to then, uh, extended by, uh, by 30, 23. And these ones are going to be accounted for in the special aid fund, which, um, is what we, we toward for our grants. This will also be subject to, uh, civil audits of financial auditors in, uh, this year. It's a, uh, branch year in New York, both Carissa and American, uh, wrestling powers will be subject to simple audits. So by the way, we were ready to submit on the 15th and then when we were told of the extension, there was a time of potentially using some, uh, slight additional funding. So we're, we're on hold right now. We're ready to go. From actually well, throughout the budget process for a number of years, um, the, the need for school psychologists um, for parents, like, and women setting from kind of spend just that is a shared, that is a shared position. So that would be in the Chris of funding for the next, next two years and then from there would be a return on investment process for for purposes going forward. When we move to the local every other day, we, uh, we reduced two teacher assistants, a middle school teacher assistant who uh, worked in behavioral support, uh, transitions of Harmony Hill. And then we no longer have in school support at Coho's High School in the David and Emira, uh, the, the teacher assistant positions are needed. Uh, as well as down below the teacher in positions as teachers is what this year. We, um, we need people to modify those positions from the existing positions, which we are able to do again because of the other, other day model. Not needing coverage in certain areas. So we will need those positions, uh, next year. Um, also, uh, as you may recall, in, in November, we did, uh, have a secretary position from, from those middle school. And, uh, the, uh, there is also additional part-time aid support that is, is needed at the elementary levels. In addition to some extra classes assigned to my seat at the start of the school year, that was 22 is here in for additional classes because of section. So, so that's included. So being academy, so being academy, uh, what's in, uh, our local budget still is in our, our local budget. However, for, um, for the next year, we are planning on, um, providing coaching support at the elementary hall through all those needs. Uh, coaching area and, uh, marketing away to help us meet the next generation learning standards. It's a very limited process. Coaching areas of marketing away to help us meet the next generation learning standards, which is a pretty limited process. So by transferring in the academy to Chris of funding, we're able to advantage that we get through those things. Because we could find those things with Chris, but then we will not be able to take the show funding game. I must see the difficulties with you, Jess.
Sure.
So we have one point, all the district can make. And the idea is for it to be a floating activity and for it to be in the chips, and it'll keep the ball, maybe essentially reduce that, which eleven to seven. Also, this would give us some flexibility if we had a special event on the same place, or if we were short-staffed in certain building projects and some possibility for everyone to to generate opportunity. So I'll just continue on, we have a lot of building requirements as well in the process, and we talked about our key needs, which were my judgment, so we've included that in the first plan, as well as facilities, equipment needs. The facility equipment needs are two orders, and it will be to extend some of the outside seating for outside classrooms, also for both staff and students to be able to eat outside. So when we talk about the American Rescue Plan in July, we'll see that there's a medical table, and that plan, so it kind of goes ahead and then. We also weren't able to include instructional materials and supplies, you'll recall that we had standard keys in the third year, and so we purchased, there was a supply very late in the year, and we cut materials and supplies out quite a bit in twenty-one, twenty-two budgets, so just to give us some flexibility, should needs arise, instructional materials. There's also money allocated for cleaning supplies, which would also include PPE, yeah, sanitizer, paper towels, that sort of thing. Also, I would even to Chris's information technology department. So this would be submitted super upgrades, also through A R P, we have the dial display units, which are, which are needed. And there's also the asked ones for our candidates, there was in the classrooms, so. Classroom furniture is also included in the academy, and we do have an upcoming travel project, travel furniture or classroom furniture is typically needed, so this is an opportunity for us to purchase a little bit piece by piece, it will impact our heat. Yeah, we have summer building leadership hours allocated, as well as some additional hours allocated for both general and special programs, summer enrichment. That's our, our general local budget, it may not be enough to cover the need because it means pretty, it's true. We also have I T support in year two, so this would be summer support to help give on initiatives during, and also pilot it. To be, we right now have Lucy's, and they're support for our innovation technology. So this would kind of be a pilot program to see if an in-house resource would work. So it would allow us to kind of have a parallel universe for, for I T support. Which should be beneficial. Anything?
Questions?
So as you touched on already, I'm exceptionally concerned on the veteran left-hand side, but all I see are recurring costs, recurring costs, recurring costs. Basically, two-year months. So I guess my follow-up question would be, you know, sort of, what's the real plan to handle that now versus we have to deal with it in two years? And then what exactly was the process that we gave to determine this list?
So as, as you, as mentioned, related, we met with different groups from the American Rescue Plan, learnings in terms of working leadership teams, and this is present, that you're building leadership teams and teacher leader teams. During those meetings, some things came up that, in the discussions of raising of teacher during those discussions, not as needs through, we have the rescue plans, but as needs that, or, or something that had been in the process in terms of the, the building process. So, so those were, those were brought to our, our attention during those, during those meetings. I can have Stacy talking about the bus, some of these positions, so I can tell you that some one of the teacher aid positions next year, so we looked at exactly where the needs are in terms, in terms of that, in the.
As far as maybe new salvage nutrition?
Through nutrition, we're no longer needing the, the needs, different student, need requirements. In terms of the teacher, the teacher assistant, we understand that two years from now, we have to do a viral line. Continue to support the instructional support model at the high school. But currently, because we're retraining, probably, we're doing a lot of virtual learning, we feel that this is going to be a bravery next year than in the future, so each of these, Stacy can speak more to the process, which of these recurring, I don't know, what people will be looking at in, in future years and discuss it. Do you want to?
Really, some of the things came up during the budget process. Some are initially included, but then majority of the other things were either identified as a miss through the budget processes that were asked for, but obviously, the environment's changed from today, the day. So then, there's a question, that's some of the budget process, and then third, some of the asks during the I T process to our benefit for the rest of. So it's kind of a free call, it's. For the I T and buildings and rentals, we sat down with the directors of those two areas. Really, that's something for this one-time purchases, and it was, what we say most critical. I will say that the plan will be to do the R I positions, excellent, I guess, see, go through A R P. Some of the items are identified as one-time purchase, temporary need with R O I. So if somebody gets labeled as an R O I, the expectation would be each year before the budget passes, so whether that suddenly, the new ads for years. And so the idea would be to have data to, to support a position or it's not working here, it's not working there. But the idea would be to talk about that each product.
You have followed.
Pretty clever way to maximize the, only reading of her. I totally understand what you're saying, and some other concerns. But next year, it's going to be all hands on deck, in every possible way. From, you know, having, maximizing the adults who are on track with our kids, layers, everything. We have no idea what's in the life. We have to, we really don't have much of a choice, but to make sure that we have the resources available. We did maybe excessive, and now we need to be R O I this year, we'll see that it's excessive. I am terribly afraid that it's not going to be excessive. And super thankful that we have this money available. If this had happened last year, we'd have to bring our goal back this year, or the market would, well, it wouldn't happen. So I understand the need to maximize support that we have available for our kids, we got them to fall, and then looking at it again. But then, some of the other things that come with the money, the other money, that we are going to have to explain how we maintain the service. So those concerns are going to have to be addressed before they go.
So Nathan, you kind of touched on my follow-up question, but part two is just going to be, do we have a plan on how these ads are concentrating on our new needs as we move back into the fall versus just service right on the battlefield? I just think that may help with the R O I, when we have to do this.
So let me present the American Rescue Plan, I mean, this, we'll be going much more in detail in those areas in terms of, you know, what the, what the needs are, the student needs they're needing, the evidence to determine success, whether it's temporarily or, or in, or in terms of these positions, we know where these positions will be, we know where they're needed. We know that some of our, we have, we have certain things, so some of our needs support in some of our classes this year, based on numbers. So we have a, we have a strong regular provision, these positions, so I think that's what you're, what you're, you're asking. But I can tell you, some of these that you see here are because we did everything for last year, we're not able to freeze the budget, but anytime someone left a position, so for example, the E positions here, when you get tired of Lanson, move the high school to fill that position. So there, so we did not fill that position, next year, both of those positions are still needed when aid was needed at harm, I think, we were, it's full time aid from Lanson to fill that position, but you're two part teams, and even Lanson. So one of these positions has that story, not funny, didn't it? We have where, where we need the facility, so that we're able to. So in the term of, to, such as, I don't know, that I'll go chart them down.
So can you and I, again, the parameters being extended, like this, this allegation? So I also, we later sort of dropped the number of positions that are plugged inside. I know that maybe it's quite, we need to be all kinds on deck, and know that we have literally been running on stellar cruise right now, and we don't have what, what we need. And so I appreciate the fact that, you know, this would potentially make us closer to whole. But it does make me very nervous, we're just coming out of, you know, some really difficult budget decisions, and I just, I, I don't ever want to be in a place to have to ever make those decisions again. So I'm just curious what the parameters for spending are. A lot of these things feel a little bit like, you know, we're playing catch-up and, and not necessarily, you know, because we don't know what our kids really, where learning costs is, we don't know where they are socially. We, we need to, you know, make sure that we address those things as well.
So you'll see those needs in our American Rescue Plan. There's, there's fifteen categories that finally didn't go into, and many of these are activities that are necessary to maintain the operation of innovative year services in our, in our schools. So for example, if we did not have the teacher assistant support at the middle school for behavioral support, then we would not have support to meet those students' needs. If we didn't have the additional teacher aid positions, we would not have program required aid in the classroom. We will be having special class next year, or we would not have enough aids for lunch coverage, or things like that. So we would then have to determine how to cover the needs, we need to go through substitute paths, well, when the substitutes have been really difficult to get this year. So those are, those are many of these categories, there's fifteen categories. I can share them all with you, some of the technology, the, 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 to help services and sports coordination. And safety, so there's, there's different criteria, and then our great application, we have to break each one of these down and put them in the buckets and show which are the incentive needs.
So with, with some of the positions, for example, like the point two, you know, priorities, would those would be adding up to a current employee potentially? And then the rest of these would be new hire fills? There's not any best question. There, I just was curious, if anybody else can recall us.
There are, there are, so for example, with the teacher assistance, we have teacher assistance on the call list, that would, we have to call first, and then if not, then they would be, they would be new, new hires. In terms of the point twos, so for example, one of them is needed because of scheduling for special education students at that, at the high school, and we weren't able to, it's needed to schedule about a point additional point two. Although it looks like an additional point two here, we would have done the, not last week, but the year previously, it's still, it's just on the price of, I don't know, one point of additional, so we're, it's point eight less public teacher than they two years ago, so each of those positions, or something like that, so those would be the additions. So that's, that's, that's okay. So with American Rescue Plan, one percent of that, where in many of these, a couple years from now, I mean, could be that because nutrition, or, or we discussed it as we, as we hire.
So I guess, more statement than question at this point, but as we move forward with any one-time funds, I go fight tooth and nail against any recurring costs, against a one-time funding opportunity. And if, I'll be honest, everything they could explain to me just made it sound like a decent base that we need for more than two years. So all we're doing is kicking that bunch of candy down the road. You know, if you could sort of show me how this slides into the general fund, that if you're free buying more technology based on those lines, I can get behind that. But as I said, I just, I think this is sending us up for lasting discussions down there.
So I think Stacy can speak to this as well, we've been very careful in our, our discussions and very so for example, so the academy, that, that is a temporary. Well, I'm trying to make you feel good about that for a second. So, so we, we, we can provide more detail and, and show you. So then we can, I mean, school psychology study room, when it's in the main, so that additional, that additional. Lansing and main store, that additional, but it's something that we will have to have discussions in. Um, for, for three weeks, for following years.
So for Stacy, that was, so I'm just. Stacy, well, we have a requirement for the H M R D funds. Uh, but I did make a requirement when we were planning. So each item. Let's get out of one of my monthly stretches that you like so much, but. But each item, um, has, uh, the sustainability. Kind of going if we go to. For castle, absolutely, so what we tried to do, obviously, push one-time purchases of being in a server. Yeah, all that stuff, easy. We suspect that some are still passed, so it's going to be a little bit more than we budgeted for, right, so this was an avenue to. To supplement. We can also change and modify those, so the application, the students are doing, and it's due for both years, so we get. Throughout, if something is. Why did someone position, so we kind of modified it. Same thing for the American Rescue Plan, the whole three years, so we don't have the application yet, so I don't know when it's due, but. They're going to not go apply for option there, it's in front of, but we can adjust that. And so, yes, I could absolutely share a spreadsheet with you.
Or just, just one other thing, so for example. Uh, if we did not have the teacher assistance for behavioral support, but then need if we were. Sensitive, uh, you know, placements, and, and just for the, for the, uh. Uh, some of these positions too, like the ten month secretary, that position, um, was happening in November, when we. See, twelve percent reduction, and so some of things are, are based on that, is that.
If, if I, if I was to say, I. I think what Rick, what Rick speaks to is important, and I'm glad he's, he's speaking to that. But at the same time, this is a world, we live with uncertainty, and. And we have, there's so many years where, where. It's kind of going from all over our heads, and sometimes it was, in fact, it wasn't real. And, and we hear, each year, it's a bunch of people, oh, we hear so, so many different opinions. And what happened, in the meantime, we've got kids who are educated and bringing them forward, I get what Rick is saying. This looks like a thoughtful process, and we're thoughtful about our, our self-care education, quite, I mean, I think this. But again, I, I get what Rick says, I respect it, but I, I think that if, if you can do these things. It wasn't, it wasn't a thought process that we, we need to, we need to, we need to do. I, I understand, I understand the fears.
Any more slides? And in that case, we can actually get to, like I said before, the, the four discussion, uh, agenda items. And one thing I wanted to point out is that we're going to vote on the consent agenda except for seven oh, we're going to. Put seven oh on its own vote, so when we get to voting, we're going to vote on a consent agenda except for seven oh, and then all of them separately. Any questions about this, ones important members of the agenda? Okay, it doesn't look like we have a community discussion. On this thing, I still work at both things, and I don't know what I am for the under, so I need community discussion, depending on the agenda. It hasn't already been brought up. With that, that I'm, uh. Asked for a motion that the board adopts the consent agenda except for seven oh.
Mrs. Gillar?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deon?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yeah.
Mr. Annalay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
And I'll ask for a motion for the board to adopt seven votes from today's agenda.
Mrs. Gillar?
That's they.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deon?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Annalay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Is there any question or comment from the board members today, except like?
This is the last meeting of the school year, but I just happy thrill really to see people joining us. Uh, and I just want to thank the administration and the teachers and the staff and person who are here. I know, I know for a fact that you're running on it, and I am so, so appreciative of everything you've done this year. For each other, for our kids, for community, I just.
Okay, do you have, um, enough from Aaron Hill that I want to share, which was a little suffering or heartfelt thanks to all those hardworking. Adults who are graduating, for the host this year, including their teachers, potential workers, support staff. And to order the shift of president, and all of it, and make kind of joy in your next steps, so thank you, and I appreciate it. And I guess, um, I'll just say thank you to everyone for the last ten years, it's been. So long, uh, you know, joining the board after a year of college and being welcomed by everyone here. Uh, very graciously, and all the board members, staff members, super attendants, everyone that I worked with has been. Extremely helpful, like learned so much, and. I'm just looking forward to continuing to get back to the community and help out, and that's all, you know, I think anybody lost when they volunteer is they hope to make things better, right? And so that's all I've tried to do here, and, uh, you know, I'm not here, I've got several places as well, as that. A wonderful board, where it's focused, caring, very much job with the community, and not only just the board or staff, I think that's one of the things that. I always have always, right, ourselves, so it's very lucky to have people that care. And I just want to, again, get my thanks for everyone for working so well with me and, and just having. You know, I, I wish, my, my, I guess, the thing that I wish is that's when I started, I thought, you know, for sure, maybe we'll have. Some more engineering or border classifieds, and I really agree, but we've run into a lot of roadblocks along the way. And to give them all that we've run into, I think we've actually come out ahead and according to maybe some other places that we haven't met as strong. People that we have there and close to the vessel on the way. And, and it's been very challenging, probably a serious one, I think we're on the right to, we're gonna create on the road to the right next steps, and so I'm very grateful for that.
I think it's not for standing over each other.
Thank you. Our next. Our next meeting, well, your next meeting, is still at seven, so reorganization is going to be. And we don't need to enter into exactly the session this evening, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn to seven twenty-four.
Mrs. Gillar?
Yes.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deon?
Mrs. Carey?
Yeah.
Mr. Annalay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, have a lovely.